would come up and join, lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Here.
And Mayor Thomas?
Here. Are there any items for agenda review?
Just one quick item, Mr. Mayor. We made a mistake on the agenda. We're actually Day of Peace is being recognized as September 21st, not today, September 11th.
Okay. Don't have that memorized yet?
Mr. Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Call for vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest, or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, presentation of a proclamation declaring September 21, 2023, as Day of Peace. And management analyst Heidi DiNardo is here to present this item. And accepting the proclamation are Laura Berger, past President, Simi Sunrise Rotary Club, and John Baxter, member, Simi Sunrise Rotary Club.
Whereas in 1981, the United Nations designated September... Yeah, come on down. Sure. The more the merrier. Lots of Rotarians. Whereas in 1981, the United Nations designated September 21 of each year as the International Day of Peace, devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace among all nations and people. And whereas the residents of Simi Valley value peace, harmony, and respect for all. And whereas peace is fundamental to the health, prosperity, security, and hope to everyone, not just in Simi Valley, but also internationally. And whereas community groups such as the Rotary Clubs of Simi Valley are working to create and implement initiatives for a safer and more welcoming environment for all, free from violence, discrimination, and hate. And whereas the City of Simi Valley recognizes the importance of promoting peace and understanding within the community. Now, therefore, the City of Simi Valley hereby commemorates September 21, 2023, as Day of Peace, which gives all residents of our community an opportunity to continue to appreciate and celebrate goodwill and friendship, and continue to develop and implement practices that promote and enhance the peace in our region, presented this 11th day of September, 2023. Thank you.
I think this is great. I love this idea. It seemed to me, though, that I heard that we were actually going to be a city of peace. We are, right? Okay, that's what I thought. Well, I do have a peaceful city, and I think this is fantastic. Ooh, I'd like to have this, and does somebody want to get a photo?
Can we get a photo with all of us?
Yeah, sure. Of course, of course. So just circle around, and who do you want to have take the photo? Each side, spread out evenly. If you can't see the camera, the camera can't see you.
There we go. All right, ready, one, two, three, and one more, just in case. One, two, three, and there we go, beautiful. There we are.
Cool.
Who's going to do? Hold it. Okay. So basically, a lot of cities of peace around the world, and especially in our country, too, we developed these peace polls just to remind people to just think, be kind, to be less judgmental and more inquisitive about other people, what they feel about things. So there's a number of them out in Simi Valley now. We're finding places, we're looking for other places now to place them in schools and parks and stuff. So that's kind of what's behind the peace polls.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 1D2, presentation of a proclamation declaring the month of September, 2023, as Emergency Preparedness Month. And Police Chief Shorts is here to present this item, and accepting the proclamation is disaster service worker, Technical Reserve, Bob Moss.
Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council, the City of Simi Valley has issued a proclamation declaring the month of September, 2023, as Emergency Preparedness Month in the city. I will read the proclamation, and Technical Reserve, Bob Moss, thank you for coming up, will accept it on behalf of the Police Department. I will now read the proclamation. Whereas September is Emergency Preparedness Month, which is an important opportunity for Simi Valley residents and businesses to build a culture of preparedness. And whereas, on August 20, 2023, Simi Valley was impacted by both Tropical Storm Hillary and the Ojai earthquake, which tested the Simi Valley community's resiliency on multiple fronts simultaneously and demonstrated the importance of preparedness. And whereas, Emergency Preparedness Month helps individuals take steps toward personal preparedness and assures that households, workplaces, schools, institutions of higher learning, houses of worship, and community-based organizations are prepared for disaster and to reduce fatalities and economic devastation following a major crisis. And whereas, everyone who completes community emergency response training will increase their preparedness, understand what types of disasters could happen in our community, whether man-made or natural, and stand ready to help their families and neighbors. And whereas, Emergency Preparedness is the responsibility of every community member in Simi Valley, and all are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together to ensure that our community is prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas, participating in Emergency Preparedness Month activities will assure that our community becomes a leader in preparedness and contributes to our community's resilience. Now, therefore, the month of September, 2023, is hereby proclaimed Emergency Preparedness Month in the City of Simi Valley, a time to prepare, to encourage all residents, businesses, and organizations to participate in preparedness activities and work toward creating a more resilient Simi Valley, presented this 11th day of September, 2023.
I think it's a good idea to have a reminder, because I know, following an earthquake here in Southern California, everybody's really diligent about being prepared. And then, as time goes by, it seems to slip away, and then by the time the next earthquake happens, we're not quite as prepared as we'd like to be. So I think that's important. Steve, do you want to come over and join us for a photo? And if you haven't, you might want to consider signing up for our CERT program. It's a great way to be involved in the city, and it's actually something that's a lot of fun to do, too. Someone want to take a photo? Do you have a camera or a phone? We got an official photographer right there.
Let's take one more here. One, two, three. There we go.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Information Reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for this item this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3B1, Presentation by Adventist Health President Jennifer Swenson.
Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council members, City manager. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share a little video with you this evening that is perfect in alignment with emergency preparedness, kind of a summary of what we went through with COVID. And I'll share the video, and then I'll say just a few items at the end.
When I first heard about COVID, it felt so unreal. I remember coming to work, and they were turning back of ICU into all the COVID rooms. And when they were all finished, it was just so quiet and eerie sounding back there. It was scary, honestly.
As an administrator, I've been in healthcare for over 32 years, and I've been through disasters, and more importantly, Simi Valley. This hospital has been through many disasters. The Ring of Fire in 2003, we were going to have to evacuate our north campus. The MetroLink train crash, we received a number of patients from that crash. The fireworks incident, when they exploded into the public that were viewing the fireworks, those were difficult situations, but there was a beginning and an end.
At least three new states are now reporting cases: New York, Florida, Rhode Island, and a number of cases growing in California, Washington.
As we watched the virus start in China and then make its way to New York...
...intracting the virus after traveling...
We didn't know what the impact was going to be. We didn't know if we had enough beds, if we had enough physicians and staff to treat patients. All of those issues, medication, how are we going to treat and ensure that we have the adequate supply chain?
Whenever you respond in an emergency situation at a hospital, you activate your hospital emergency incident command system. And to us, it was just routine. We launched our emergency tents, we planned for the potential triage of patients outside. We got together a leadership group to start the communication process to make sure that we could handle anything that came through our doors. The problem at the beginning is, there wasn't a lot of people coming through our doors, and what we were hearing from cities like New York was very scary, yet it hadn't hit
We really didn't see a lot of activity with that first wave. Fortunately, we had the ability to obtain the ventilators that were needed, we had the ability to obtain the supplies that were needed, so it kind of gave us time to prepare.
We ended up having to outfit and convert and add about 50 new negative air pressure rooms. Our plant services guys are there with HEPA filters, trying to figure out, how do we create a negative air pressure room environment in the current structure that we have? And so, we were dealing with things that we literally had to put together teams to come up with.
Maybe we can think about getting a pruning team or, you know, superhining team.
When we first put together our initial leadership group, there was a lot of information we had to decipher through and be on the same page.
We set up weekly calls amongst all of the hospitals, the emergency agencies, and of course, Dr. Levin was a key component of how we were going to respond to this pandemic.
Everything was evolving. People, over and over again, said that we were building an airplane in mid-flight. In this case, I don't even think the chapter's written in the textbooks on this virus.
The county really stepped up in a way that I have not seen before. The resources and the way that we worked together was phenomenal.
Everybody at that hospital were always the first to step up, were always generous, and humane, and caring, and courageous. I just can't say enough good things about that hospital.
One of the challenges that we faced is how to prepare our staff and physicians for what was to come.
Just be hyper diligent with going...
At first, it's kind of like, what is this going to be like? It was so unknown. Are we going to have a major role in this? What exactly is COVID doing to everybody? We were learning. It was affecting the lungs, it was affecting everybody very drastically in their breathing, and it was a lot of fear and anxiety. It wasn't that we didn't have what we needed, I think it was more, we were terrified of catching it and taking it home.
My family, we have a son, he has a disability, and he's very medically fragile. There was always a fear for my family, that there was something that I was going to bring home to them. At first, there was a lot of mystery, and we didn't really understand it, so I wasn't 100% sure that I was keeping my family safe by coming here to keep other people safe. So that was a very tricky time.
The staff started to feel a sense of confidence, as one of our first patients, Benito, 79 days within our organization, he survived COVID. He had a parade as he left this organization. We were just so blessed to see him recover. So there was a good sense, there was a good feeling in the organization, like, we've got this, we can do this, patients are surviving. And then the second wave hit.
It was a large number of people all at once. So really trying to accommodate all those needs was difficult. It stressed the entire system.
We had already been burnt out, we'd already been working so hard. So getting hit with a... We weren't just dealing with now these mass influx of patients and not having supplies, we're now also dealing with the nurses who are exhausted, the doctors who are exhausted, the RTs who are exhausted.
We all know our jobs, what to do, the nurses, you know, we all just work so well together. But when you're constantly having to go to code blues, code blues, rapid responses, all through your shift, it takes a toll on you. Watching these people die, it was sad. I was doing chest compressions, sometimes did them for 45 minutes to an hour because we were trying to save these patients. Then you kind of gather yourself and realize, you know, what you just did and what happened, and there's nothing you can do to save that patient. So yeah, it definitely...
As the vaccine became available, we wanted to get it into arms as soon as we could. It's a very challenging process. You had to have the right equipment, the freezer that would hold both the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccine. We created a clinic. My leaders in this organization, they did these clinics above and beyond their normal work.
As we started rolling out the vaccine to the community and providing it, seeing what it meant to each individual person, that was the light at the end of the tunnel.
There was such a positive outlook on what this vaccine was going to do for our community that everybody wanted it now. And Dr. Levin really looked at, how do we roll this out in a very meaningful, intentional way? Healthcare workers were, you know, part of the number one group. But teachers are also essential. So we set up a mega clinic.
They led a group of nurses with our district nurses, and about 50 to 70 volunteers from our district of our administrators. And over two different weekends, we're able to inoculate 2,400 employees, including a group of Cal Lutheran University faculty. There was such gratitude from our staff about what they were able to accomplish and help us do for our employees. Our staff showed up with signs and support for the hospital, and our employees looked forward to it, because they knew that they were being taken care of, they knew they were being prioritized. And I couldn't have done that without them, I couldn't have done that without the hospital. We did something pretty remarkable with these clinics, and I think it shows that the two agencies can work really well together, and that if we need to in the future, we can do that, not only for the school district, but potentially for the community.
I have to say, though, our community did just as much for us as we did for them. And there wasn't a day going by during the pandemic that someone, some organization, some business, some individual wasn't delivering food for us. We even had to set up a donation center, because we were getting so many individuals donating N95 masks from painters, who said, I want the hospital to have it. And dropping off food for somebody that just had to work a 16-hour shift, there was a lot of stuff that just helped make the day that much more bearable and sustain them for another day of fighting.
To survive this, we really relied on each other. I would cry, and someone would come and hold me, it didn't matter who it was. So I just think that kind of stuff, that support, was important.
My team, this is what...
My team, this is what they're called for. Not just taking care of patients, but their families. And we really saw it during the pandemic. Families are scared for their loved ones. And sometimes those patients that are scared, the nurses are there, holding their hand. The ICU has worked closely with respiratory therapists and I'm thankful for them. And then not to forget our EVS. Making sure all our units are clean, that the nurses are safe when they're outside the patient's room. Also the stores, you know, bringing us equipment tubing for patients' pumps to be able to be kept outside. And pharmacy, ensuring those drips are here. We did it as a, as a team.
Our lab, they had to process every single swab. Our IT team, one of the challenges was the infrastructure for the nurses and physicians to be able to do their job. Nothing short of heroic. When we were asking so much of them. And for our community to experience what our associates and physicians provided, went right along with our mission statement, which was live in God's love.
Even though we don't know exactly how this is going to progress in our future, what we do know is that we will be ready for whatever comes our way. Thank you for allowing me to share that. I think it's important. I hope that that's the only pandemic I ever get to go through in my career. But as you saw from the video, I think our 1,200 employees, our 400 physicians have been serving this community since 1965. We continue to be there for whatever comes our way. And I just want to publicly thank our community for supporting us during this time. As you saw, I think all of the executives gained at least 10 pounds during this time from all the food that we received, but more importantly, it was the support. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually Jennifer, before you sit down, I, I would love to say something, ask a question if that's all right, Mayor. Thank you for sharing that. That was, was beautiful. And thank you for all that Simi Valley Adventist, Adventist Health does for the community in so many, many different ways. And, and you're being very modest. I wondered if you would just take a minute to speak to the amazing robotics program that you have at the hospital. I realize that may be off topic for what this was all about, which is, which was very wonderful here. But I want my colleagues to also appreciate just what is happening in that realm, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to answer that question. Adventist Health Simi Valley is the first and only center of excellence for robotic surgery. And that's just not on one robot. That's actually on three different platforms for dealing with total hips and knees, dealing with spine surgery and dealing with general surgery, hernias, et cetera. And what we have found with robotics is that it is minimally invasive. Obviously you experience less blood loss. Most of the time, you can actually leave the hospital the same day. And one of our surgeons actually does not prescribe any narcotics because of using the robotics as technology. So that's a huge impact on our community, especially in dealing with the opioid crisis that we've experienced. So really proud of the work that we've done in this space. And it just put us on the map for being a high-quality organization. And that's what we are known for now. And so we continue to build those service lines and proud to say that we are certified as a center of excellence. So thank you.
Thank you.
What are your, right now, what are our COVID numbers currently in the hospital? People hospitalized because of COVID?
So actually very low. I think today we probably have five. So what we're seeing is a spike. I don't know the exact number of our Ventura County transmission that came out on Friday. But we are seeing a spike back up, but we're not seeing that result in hospitalizations, which is great.
I just wanted to say thank you for all you and the hospital do for the community. You know, I'm very supportive of the hospital. And you, you do a great thing for everybody here. The hospital has grown so much. And having you as our leader here has really been a tremendous, wonderful thing for our community. So I just wanted to say thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. I did celebrate my, end of my eighth year at Simi Valley. And it's wonderful to see all the hard work actually continue to grow in our community. And being able to give back is just something we treasure.
And all the awards, Certified Stroke Center, all these things that the average person doesn't know. Adventist Health has just done a fantastic job for our community. So thank you from everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item four, public statements. During this agenda item four, the city council will hear public statements from the first 10 persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first 10 persons have spoken, subsequent persons who submitted speaker cards will be called on to speak under agenda item six, which is a continuation of agenda item four. Agenda items four and six are agenda items. Time's allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order which your card was submitted to speak for this public statement, item four, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin public statements.
Please proceed.
The first speaker is Kent Matthews.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Good? I was here a couple of weeks ago, you may or may not remember, addressing the property at 2100 Covington Avenue. And I was asked at the time to get it agendized. I don't know the procedure on that, how long that takes. If it's two weeks, you guys have to do the research or whatever. So maybe you could get an answer on that, probably a phone call or something. But spoke with other board members with our, with our association. And they're going to start trickling in just one at a time. Because basically, we've never, in the, I think they built the property, the dead end went down in like 2000, maybe right around there. We've never been asked to maintain this property. And I don't know if I made that clear last time I was here. So that, that's, that's pretty much all I wanted to say about that. Being a representative for the neighborhood and the community, the homeowners association. There is one other issue that has come into, into our play. The address is 1921, there's a house for sale. It happens to be the first house in our development. And our development has been there since the seventies. There was an empty lot at Arringer, Fitzgerald and Covington, like a triangle shaped piece of property there for years. And early 2000, this last 20 years or so, there was three homes put in there. And they joined an HOA adjacent somehow. And so they got their little three homes and they built a retaining wall perpendicular to Covington, so it runs north and south. And the wall's about 40 feet long, I'm guessing, and about six feet, six feet tall. And when you drive down the street and you slow down, look at it, it's leaning about a foot. I'm probably exaggerating, probably about six inches, it's out of plum. So I got out and went and looked at the wall and it, you can actually move it back and forth, about two inches. So the wall was built by the builder from the newest development, which isn't a part of us. And the home is for sale. And the wall's leaning towards the home that's for sale in our community. So I brought it to the attention of the Realtor. Her name is Madeline Gillibrand. I have her phone number, if you'd like it. She's going to come. She meant to try to be here tonight, she couldn't make it. She said she'd bring some pictures in about two weeks. And I just told her, I said, hey, it's in your best interest representing your client that they're going to buy a house with a wall leaning into, into their property. So that was it. Hope you all have a good evening. Thanks.
Mario Ostorga.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here also pretty much on the same issue. I am the part of the board of members of the HOA. And what I just want to give you a little bit more information on the situation with this piece of land that has been assigned to us. And we don't know exactly how it came to be that we're responsible for it. So we would like to, your help to find out how we got to that point. I do want to say that I've been a resident on 2019 Covington Avenue for more than 20 years, when that street was a dead end. At that point, it was very clear what area belonged to the HOA and what area was private property. Since the development of the new community there, I feel strongly that that new community makes more sense and is more logical. That it seems to me that is their responsibility, since they're the ones who have divided that area. So I'm just here to ask for your help to look into it. As Ken said, if you can add it to the agenda and maybe follow up, we would greatly appreciate it. And last but not least, another reason would be that our association is actually facing some financial challenges as it is. And making that piece of land our responsibility would just make it a lot harder on us. The new community, who I believe belongs, the property belongs to, it is a more affluent community. So it makes a lot more sense that the responsibility should fall on them. Thank you very much for listening to me. That's all I had to say. The address is actually 2100, adjacent to 2100 Covington. 2100 is actually the address for the pool area for the association. And the piece of land is adjacent to 2100 Covington. Thank you very much. Any questions? No, thank you. That's all I had to say.
Edgardo Galileo Rivas.
Good afternoon, Mayor Thomas, city councils. This is a continuation from August 28th. I do not know Mr. Rhodes was sitting as a city manager on the 28th. And I see him over there now. So I want to present four documents about the businesses, and I agree with the chief man-made laws where I recite. I'm a two-time war veteran, and today's September 11th. I'm a Salvadorian veteran against communism. And I'm a Vietnam veteran against communism. I've been living in Simi Valley for over 25 years. Like I told the mayor on the 28th, I used to cross here back in the early 60s when there was all oranges and cabbage, whatever. But I need to request for Sean Centeno, and I need your help. And I want the chief involved with Sergeant Nicholson and Officer Butler to investigate Centeno's corruption and his communists. I feel like I'm in, in a community of communists. The man has put spies on me. I don't know if the city manager read the paperwork, but I lived for five months with cockroaches by Centeno and Spinrad. Ms. Angulo, in August 23rd, 2021, she apologized to me for Centeno's wrongdoing. The, the way he's handling our community. And the word community, communist comes from the community in my language. And that's what Centeno is doing. And I think that the manager and city attorney David Casetes has, I talked to him twice. Like I tried to talk to the manager, you're not a city manager, right, Mr. Rhodes? Thank you, sir. I tried to talk to this gentleman, Gabler, and he doesn't want to talk to me. And he knows about my case. And he knows about Centeno, so does Caseres, knows about Centeno forcing me to pay, demanding me to pay $4,400 per month. He started doing this on February of '21. And the last letter I received for him demanding money was on May 19th, 2023. So we need to investigate, the city needs to investigate Centeno, his lawyers. Why me? Why did he pick on me? I never done anything. I am a family man. Centeno, he's from a different culture. But I am a family man. I have kids. I want my children to be respected. One of them is a psychologist, which is Jenny. And the other one's a chemist. They're very bright young ladies. And I think the city manager, Mr. Gabler and Casetes should permit you guys or council you guys to investigate Centeno. Where I have experienced in three years communism where I live. This gentleman is trying to steal money from me and my daughter.
I don't want to dismiss you, but you're out of time and I, I need to ask you to.
I want to thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
But I, I would consider for you guys next week, next Monday, to give me an answer. I, I'm sure Sergeant Nicholson and Officer Backland will, will take care of this gentleman. But I'm encouraging you to investigate Centeno. He's stealing money. That's what he's doing, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Edgar Garabey.
Hello. Good evening, city council. My name's Edgar Garabey. I've been a citizen of Simi Valley for seven years now. And the reason why I'm here tonight is because I don't feel safe walking along Royal Avenue. So my son, he just started Universal Transitional Kindergarten. And I've been walking him to school pretty much every day because the school's like within walking distance. And we have to walk along Royal Avenue for about 300 feet, cross the street to get to a school. However, when you're walking along Royal Avenue on the already narrow sidewalk, which at one point gets even narrower because there's a telephone pole there. I, there's cars that are driving, you know, well past the posted speed limit. Even though there's speed limit signs saying 25 miles per hour, motorists are not adhering to that. And they're just flying by, just a few feet away from us. The most egregious incident was when a motorcyclist was trying to beat the red light. And they were just, he just went right by us, just a few feet away. I do want to thank the Simi Valley PD because I was able to reach out to them to get some police presence out there to encourage motorists to slow down. And the, they were there and they even, you know, ticketed some people. However, their presence is inconsistent and understandably so. They can't always be out there, right? They have other things to do. So the reason why I'm here is because I'm hoping that we can open up a conversation about creating a long-term solution to the chronic speeding issue on Royal Avenue. Because keep in mind, it's not just Madera Elementary School that's on Royal Avenue. We also have Sinaloa Middle School and Royal High School. And my hope is that my children, my two sons, will eventually be able to walk themselves to school. However, as long as Royal Avenue has a chronic speeding issue, it's just, it's not safe for children to walk. I'm seeing, you know, kids walk on this avenue and it's just like, man, this is not safe at all. So I'm hoping we can open a conversation on making this safer. I, I also brought this issue up, my concern up with the neighborhood council number four. And they recommended that I come to the city council to air my concerns. And Emily Habib specifically said that I should definitely talk to you, Rocky Rhodes. I guess. I guess, you know, you have this perception that you get stuff done, so hopefully we can work together to make something happen. But understandably, I know this is, you know, it's not an easy issue to tackle. I know it takes a lot of work. It's a, you know, it's going to be a long-term, you know, it's going to take a lot of work. And please let me know what I can do to help out, what I can do to, to address this issue and make Royal Avenue safer for kids and pedestrians to walk on. Thank you so much for your time.
Sep Bayani.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is my first time up. I've never actually said anything, but so our residential area located between Sequoia and Galena has a beautiful park where we all like to walk, have picnics and walk our dogs and enjoy relaxing fresh air because there's a lot of trees and grass. We recently learned this nature will be removed and replaced with rocks and some turf. So we are concerned, this is artificial turf, and our concerns are who will be cleaning the turf? Owners after their dogs, they don't, they don't pick up all the time. The urine, these don't decompose, the feces, it doesn't go away, it will just remain on the grass. So our concerns are basically health-related and sanitation, how are kids going to be able to use that park or continue to use it? Who's going to be cleaning it maybe on a weekly basis? Or is it even artificial? What's happening to our community's park? That was not made clear, and that was our main concern. And also in summer, if it's plastic, it's going to be very hot, kids will not be able to run around, we will not be able to walk our dogs. So we just wanted to get some clarity on that and how we can keep the grass and not replace it with plastic or artificial turf. That is it for me. Thank you.
Michelle Moots.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Maudes, and I am a Simi Valley resident of 19 years. Thank you for making time to listen to me. I am here tonight because I am a concerned citizen, concerned about the welfare of our city. Over the past few months, I have noticed a significant increase in the number of abandoned shopping carts in Simi Valley. Even more concerning than this blight on our community is the fact that we do not seem to have an effective system in place to deal with this situation. There are many studies that show that abandoned shopping carts indicate a decline in the health of a community. These wayward carts are associated with reduced socio-economic prosperity, homelessness, and crime. The current policies and procedures for getting these carts removed from sidewalks, curbs, and the arroyo appears to be ineffective. I have been attempting to get shopping carts removed from the area near Royal and Appleton on the southeast corner for nearly two months. I have filed multiple reports with Public Works, both online and by telephone. I have called the stores, the merchants, and spoken to one of the cart pickup services in attempt to get those carts removed, and today, there still continues to be the same two abandoned shopping carts in this location. I suggest Simi Valley use the graffiti hotline model to address this problem. The graffiti hotline works seamlessly. It's easy for residents to call and report a graffiti incident on the recorded line 24 hours a day, and the graffiti is almost immediately removed. It's a great program, and we would benefit from something similar to deal with the shopping cart issue. Thank you for your attention.
Elena Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the members of the Simi Valley City Council. My name is Elena Johnson. I am from District Three with Ms. Lister. I have not been here for a long time, I'm busy with a lot, but I always say to myself, better late than never, right? So I'm here to last give you a reaction on what I heard about the city council approving by a vote of three and two the addition or allowing trailers on both sides of the house. I don't know the real issues, I don't know the argument, right? But I can tell you, Ms. Lister, your voice of, your vote of no is highly appreciated because you really represent the pulse of that district. I live in Hollister. As I drive out, I see a lot of those. One, one house facing one side street along Elizondo Avenue has a trailer, right, facing that. Right behind that house facing Elizondo is another trailer, so they are back to back. And I keep to myself, what's the privacy, the privacy issue? Those lots were built with big spaces in between the houses to make sure that there's no encroachment or like no spying, for lack of a better word, on the private businesses of those families. But in addition to that, we have observed that somebody lives in one of that trailer. So my concern is this, having passed that legislation or ordinance in our city, what type of policing or secondary measures that you are going to implement to make sure that those do not become housing units for people who are not residents of the house? My fear is that we already have the ADUs, we have SB9, we have tons of condominiums being built, and you have those motorhomes being occupied by individuals who do not live in that place. Maybe taxation is something that's being eroded here, because if those people live in apartments or something, they would generate income for the city, but being undetected because these are housing people who are not really residents of the house, that's the question. So I have 53 seconds. The other thing that I want to mention is, in many of the meetings that I have attended, I have always suggested that there should be an umbrella organization that will look at the activities of the city council, the public works, and the Board of Education. I see in your agenda about a bond measure, I'm not speaking to that because I know this is not the time to say that, but are you aware that the Board of Education is also going to campaign for a bond measure come March? This was in their meeting of August 15. It's scary because they want to raise 400 million if they go with the study created by the people that did the bond of Measure 10. So now you have two types of bonds happening in Simi. What is going to happen to us? I think it's time that we look at an oversight organization, that we look at the practices or taxation system, because that's taxing people, not at this time when we have a very high rate of inflation. Thank you so much, and we want to live in Simi, but if we can't afford it, we have no choice.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 4A, City Council comments regarding public statements.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For Kent and I think it was Mario, I apologize if I didn't get the names, being that there is there in District Four, I think that there has been some activity on that. I will follow up and, and see what is happening and see if we can get some feedback, or at least I'd be curious of the feedback as well. The, Edgar, you still here? Our photographer, thank you. My kid went, or one of my kids went to Madera and both went to Sinaloa, so I know of what you speak, and I haven't talked, this is the first that I've heard of this condition. I know there's speeding there, I might even be guilty of it myself, but the, the fact that it's that bad during those times, when there's the crossing guards and such there, I've always seen it being safe during those school hours, but it's worth looking into, and perhaps we can look out, I can see Chief Shorts and see if we can do something there. I, I'm sorry about the, the person who spoke about the park, I neither got the name of the speaker nor, I didn't get your name.
Uh, Sep.
Sep. And, and I didn't get which park it was, I'm sorry.
It's located between Sequoia and Galena, right across the post office. There's a green belt that's big enough, like a park that goes across-
Got it.
-from Sequoia to Galena.
All right. And the city manager is on it, he knows where it is. So thank you, thank you for bringing that up. Michelle, thank you for talking about the abandoned carts, and what I loved about your presentation is you came with a, a solution model that already works for graffiti, and, and maybe that is a thing. I'm not sure what the, the current chronic condition is on shopping carts, if it's just those two all the time. The only place that I knew about shopping cart issues was throwing them over the side by the railroad tracks on Madera. But your point is well made, that a community doesn't look great with that in place. And Elena, thank you, welcome back, haven't seen you in a while. Thank you for speaking. The bond issue with the schools have great concern for me as well, and I'm not 100% sure what the city gets to do about that, but it's a big concern. All right. Mr. Mayor, that ends my comment.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I'm going to work backwards if that's all right. Elena, thank you for being here. Just so you understand, we're going to be talking about the bond issue later, but what's on our agenda, it does not obligate citizens in any way, simply that we are the, basically the conduit that has to approve it so that the private, so basically so that they can have the funds that are tax exempt to do special development on renovating a senior facility, but we have zero, they just have the right to sell bonds as they want, it has nothing to do with the taxpayers, so I just, but certainly, but we, but we can certainly talk more about that. Michelle, and your shopping carts. I concur that shopping carts are as blight-looking often as graffiti, and I would concur that actually, that the difference, of course, theoretically, is that the shopping carts are privately held and belong to, to businesses. Nonetheless, they do have the appearance of graffiti and blight, and so I think that's a great idea, and I think we should discuss it a little bit further, and so thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I think that there'll be more discussion about the green belt that we're discussing. It's not actually a park, is that correct? But it is a green belt that we're discussing that the city controls, or is it the park? Do we, you'll answer that one? Okay, thank you. But I'd like to conclude by talking about Royal, Royal Avenue, because I, for years, have been concerned about the speed, and not just the speed, the proximity of the sidewalk and access to that. I think that is the most dangerous place in our community, is that Royal Avenue. And, and I don't, I don't know how simply changing the speed limit is going to solve that, and maybe it means we need to look at a street redesign, maybe we need to look at putting up barriers on the sidewalk so as children walk that sidewalk, they don't have access to, I don't know what the solution is, but I, I concur, it is a problem point, and we need to look at it much more closely. So thank you for sharing your experience with us, and, and I want to thank all of us who contributed to the conversation today. There's much that we can do together as a city, so thank you very much.
Mayor Protim Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming and presenting your concerns to us. Royal Avenue, chief, that has to be looked at, we have to be enforcing the speed limit there during school hours vigorously. We've already lost one crossing guard in that area, so we don't want to lose another second. Shopping carts, yeah, I don't like them either. But our, our hotline numbers do work for shopping carts too, they are reported to Public Works, and if we have to go out and pick them up, we will. Most of the time, we try to make the stores pick them up, so don't, don't be afraid to call those into the graffiti hotline or pothole hotlines, they'll all get to Public Works eventually. Yeah, that's about all I have as far as the issues with the homeowners association and stuff. I'm sure the city manager's on that already. Thanks.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to repeat what everyone else has already said, thank you all very much for being here tonight. I also do have concerns with the, the Royal Avenue. I drive that every morning and every afternoon coming to and from school. Part of it is the way Madera Elementary is situated there, and there's no, it's very difficult to do drop-offs. Sinaloa at least has a longer way, and my daughter works at Sinaloa, so I kind of understand that, but both of those areas, I avoid that area in the morning and go around it, but yeah, we, we probably do need to look at something. We did have a crossing guard hurt there very badly a few years ago, so I think it is something maybe we can look at. Again, there's no immediate fix, but to be on top of it and be aware of it as the police chief is, then that's a good thing. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight. I did want to comment on Royal as well. It's been a concern of mine, not only just on Royal, but the speeding throughout the city and people running red lights and trying to jump ahead of traffic and stuff. We have too many accidents in this town, and I've had long conversations with the chief, he's in absolute agreement. We're trying to work on some ways to beef up our traffic, and we will continue to do that, so, okay. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to have the city manager comment on a couple of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, members of the council, regarding Covington, I thought our code enforcement person, Mara Mulch, reached out to the HOA there, you are not responsible for that property, so you can forget about that responsibility, so that should not be yours. We made a mistake on who was responsible for that property. With regard to the shopping carts, we do have on our website, you can report, if you go to our website and say, I want to report, you can report on that, a shopping cart at a particular location. There's also a shopping cart, abandoned shopping cart website or a hotline, which is 583-6881, that you can report an abandoned shopping cart. We will contact the shopping cart service that picks up for that store, because the stores are all responsible for having a shopping cart service to pick up for them. So you can call 583-6881, or you can call 583-6753, Monday through Friday, and you'll get a body to answer that phone, but nevertheless, we will pick it up, or you can leave that on our website. And on the landscaping, that is actually a green belt area that is being converted to a drought-tolerant material. There's no artificial turf going down there, it is drought-tolerant planting, and we're removing the turf because it's, it's, we're trying to remove all the turf around the community and be more cognizant of water usage. So there's not artificial turf going in, but it is drought-tolerant material going in there as well. It'll be, it'll continue to be maintained by the city.
Aren't we, aren't we mandated to remove turf and-
Non-functional turf we have to remove, yeah.
That's my thought.
And Brian, just can I ask a quick question? If it's not obvious who the cart belongs to, do we still, they still report it and-
They still report it, we'll go out and take a look at it if we have to figure out which, it would be helpful to know what store it is, that way we can, we know what service to call, but if not, we'll send someone out there and pick it up. We can't pick them up because they're not our property, and we don't have anywhere to store them either, but we call the cart service and they're supposed to get them within, I believe, 24 hours.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings under consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. That the record show that due notice was given as required by law and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record, however, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Speakers will be called in in the order in which the car was submitted for this public testimony item five for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Comments should be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to this item. The reports of city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the city council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. A public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving the issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the financing of a qualified residential rental project for the elderly and the disabled. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number 2023-39, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving a plan of financing, of finance, including the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $20 million to finance and refinance a qualified residential rental project for the benefit of Haywood Gardens LP and certain other matters relating thereto. And Assistant City Manager Linda Swan is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and City Council. Rebuild America Simi Valley LLC in partnership with Haywood Gardens LP has requested that the California Municipal Finance Association, known as CMFA, issue and sell tax-exempt revenue bonds- bonds in the maximum principal amount of $20 million for the purpose of financing and refinancing the cost of acquisition, rehabilitation, improvement, and equipping of the affordable rental project that is located at 1770 Haywood Street, which is designated for low-income seniors and the disabled, 62 years of age and older. This partnership provides the mechanism for Haywood Gardens' acquisition and rehabilitation to obtain tax-exempt financing. So to facilitate this request, and because the project is located in the City of Simi Valley, the city council must approve the bond issuance by CMFA. Haywood Gardens is currently working with the city's planning division with regards to plan submittal. Additionally, the city's housing staff is finalizing proposed modifications to the existing affordability agreement requested by Haywood Gardens, which is subject to expire on November 19, 2033. These modifications include increasing the income limit to 60% of area-wide median income to provide affordable housing for both very low and low-income households, and to extend the affordability term an additional 10 years until 2043. Staff will return to city council with a new affordability agreement for city council consideration on September 25. As stated in the staff report, the city is no way responsible for the debts and obligations of CMFA, and the bonds issued for the project are the sole responsibility of Haywood Gardens. The city, however, must hold a public hearing in order to facilitate the financing request. This evening, we are meeting the public hearing requirement, which is in accordance with the Federal Tax Equity and Responsibility Act, known as TFR. In accordance with TFR, the city published a notice of public hearing in the Ventura County Star on August 28, 2023, and the public hearing provides the opportunity for all interested persons to speak or submit written comments concerning the proposal to issue the bonds and the nature or location of the facility to be financed. The public hearing is not intended for the city council to consider the proposed changes to the project, however, comments regarding the project are welcome. Each public agency who conducts a TFR hearing shall receive 25% of CMFA's administrative fee. The city estimates that it could receive approximately $9,000 for the term of the respective bonds if the full amount of $20 million is issued for the Haywood Gardens project. Again, the city shall have no obligation to pay any principal, interest, fees, or any other costs associated with CMFA's issuance of the bond. The city is simply facilitating Haywood Gardens' request. So staff is recommending at the conclusion of the hearing that the city council take the following actions. Adopt the resolution before you this evening authorizing the issuance of one or more series of revenue bonds in an aggregate amount of $20 million by the CMFA on behalf of Haywood Gardens Limited Partnership to provide for financing of a residential rental project for the elderly and disabled, and authorize the city manager or designee to execute any supporting documents. This concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. We also have Travis Cooper from CMFA, and Ali and Sissy Watson, who are affiliated with Haywood Gardens Limited Partnership, on standby, should you have any questions.
Do you have any questions from council? Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Swan, so I do have a question, not so much about the bonds. I had one when I read the word "bond." I had the same reaction of, oh, uh, but if we're not obligated to them, then I'm satisfied on that. The question before us on the bonds, I'm satisfied with, but an underlying question on the project. I'm seeing the designation change to include low income versus very low income, and I'm just curious, if that change takes place, does that affect our RENA numbers and our allocation to very low income?
It would not, because that's, those are, no, it would not.
Okay.
Yep.
That was my only question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lidster.
Thank you. And I appreciate that this is not a discussion in any way to talk about the actual changes to the project, although I thought it was very nice that we were allowed to have comments regarding the project, that they're welcome. I thought that was very gracious. And so, and this, 1770 Haywood is smack in the middle of District 3, and so I have been there, visited there, and it's an interesting, a very nice facility, and I'm glad that there's plans to improve and upgrade. But I guess my question is one of residents that are there currently. In all of the plans, will there be displacement of those residents who are there currently as changes are made? Or what is, what is the discussion about?
There is a plan, but maybe Sissy would like to address that?
Sure, yes. Good evening. Absolutely happy to answer. We will relocate each of the residents temporarily while their unit is being renovated, and then they'll move back in. We always hope to move them back into their exact same unit. They seem to be partial to that, and so that's certainly our desire for them, but we will move them out of their apartment during the rehab.
Thank you. I appreciate that reassurance. And I believe this, we're talking about 75 units, is that, is that correct? And the same, the units will stay the same, the same number? You're not expanding or?
That is correct.
Got it. Okay. Well, thank you for that reassurance. That was really my only question.
At this time, I would like to open the hearing for anyone in the city council chamber wishing to be heard on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, we have no speaker cards for this item.
And this hearing is now closed. Any further comments or questions from the city council members? Councilmember Rhodes.
I'll make the motion if we're ready for that.
Please proceed.
All right. I move that we adopt Resolution number 2023-39 authorizing the issuance of one or more series of revenue bonds in the aggregate amount not to exceed $20 million by the California Municipal Finance Authority on behalf of Haywood Gardens LP to provide for financing of a residential rental project for the elderly and disabled located at 1770 Haywood Street, and authorize the city manager or designee to execute any supporting documents to effectuate the resolution.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item is 5B, Consideration of General Plan Amendment, Pre-screening Review of GPPS 2023-0001. Newport Land Company, a request to change the location of approved general plan land use designation of open space, recreation, commercial, residential estate, low-density residential, and medium-density residential for a 1,771-acre site, Lost Canyon specific plan located at 3301 Lost Canyons Drive. And Associate Planner Elizabeth Richardson, Deputy Environmental Services Director Sean Gibson, and Principal Planner Claudia Pedrosso are here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, members of the city council. Again, this is a pre-screening application public hearing, which means that we're not taking action on any project approval tonight. It's just a preliminary look on whether to allow the applicant to proceed further with any further applications and design development stage of this possible modification. And I'll refer to Elizabeth Richardson to conduct a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and city council members. Tonight, we are reviewing a request for a general plan pre-screen for the Lost Canyons project. The applicant is requesting a general plan pre-screen to change the location of approved general plan land use designations, open space, recreation, commercial, residential estate, low-density residential, and medium-density residential for purposes of modifying the approved site plan for a 1,771-acre site located at 3301 Lost Canyons Drive. As Sean said, it is important to note that tonight, the city council is not approving a development project, but rather, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for the city council to consider authorizing the proposal for future processing. This is an aerial image of the project site looking north. In this photo, the project area is outlined in red, and the colors representing the areas of the project are the phasing. Big Sky Neighborhood is located to the left of the project site, and the project site is located within the Whiteface Specific Plan Dry Canyon-Tapo Canyon area. The Whiteface Specific Plan, Volume 2, Dry and Tapo Canyons, also known as the Lost Canyon Specific Plan, was adopted on August 12, 2013. The Lost Canyon Specific Plan envisions development of 364 dwelling units, a redesigned golf course and amenities, as well as open space dedication. On September 2, 2020, the Planning Commission approved a modification for cluster development, allowing 184 single-family dwelling units to be constructed north of Lost Canyons Drive. The site is currently undeveloped, except for the closed golf course and related buildings. The current land uses of the project area are open space, recreation, commercial, residential estate, low-density residential, and medium-density residential. Low-density residential and medium residential land uses are shown on the map in yellow and are located both north as well as south of the Lost Canyons Drive. The proposal will redistribute all residential land uses to north of Lost Canyons Drive, as circled here in red. The recreation, commercial land use is shown on the map in pink and is located over the area where the current golf course is located. The recreation, commercial land use will generally remain in place, however, it will be reduced in size to accommodate the relocated residential land use. Open space is located in dark green and is located both north and south of Lost Canyons Drive. Relocating the residential land uses north will expand the open space land uses to the, in the areas to the south of Lost Canyons Drive. And residential land use is shown in the light green, is located both north and south of Lost Canyons Drive, and this area will generally remain unchanged with the proposed land use amendment. In this table, we can see the resulting acreages from the, from the land use redistribution. The open space land use acreage will increase by 296 acres, while the total acreage for the residential land uses will decrease from 763 acres to 512 acres. This doesn't take into account the difference in the hillside development. On the screen are the criteria used when considering a general plan pre-screening request. These include that the redistribution of the land uses within the project area will allow for development that is compatible with the surrounding land uses by encouraging a more organized development pattern, resulting in Dry and Tapo Canyons to remain in its natural state while not affecting the allowed project density. Additionally, the proposed land use amendment would be compatible with the goals and policy of the general plan by prioritizing future growth as infill by redistributing development into the existing underused utilized golf course since closing in 2016, and preserving the Dry and Tapo Canyon as open space while still accommodating the development. And in the last 12 months, there have been no other amendments in the same general area, nor has there been new land use studies or policies adopted. And based on the analysis required for a general plan pre-screen, staff recommends the city council authorize the applicant to file the general plan amendment as requested. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Do I have any questions of staff from city council? Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, it's my understanding that south of Lost Canyons Boulevard, will any of the, virtually any of the land that is currently owned by this project, with all of the residents moving north of the thing, all of that would be designated as open space? Is that?
It is a mix of open space as well as residential estate lots. The residential estate lots aren't changing, but the amount of open space will increase with this change.
The, can we see that, that map with the residential estate lots?
It's up there on the screen.
So, I get to use the pointer. I haven't used this yet. So these, are these actually lots that are owned, sorry, that are owned by the developer? Or this remains unchanged because it's a separate owner?
My applicant, the applicant is here tonight and will be able to clarify better on the ownership distribution of the, of the land in the specific plan area?
Okay. They come up after. Okay. Excellent. And then, just in curiosity, can you give me some examples of things that can be, that done in open space, what that can be used for?
The, the specific plan has criteria for what's allowed in open space. There are certain uses which are allowed citywide in open space districts. The specific plan has other set criteria for open space, and a lot of it's designated for natural areas. There's restricted areas for biological preserve sorts of things. So that's the primary ten. A lot of it is hillside areas, which are above the 20% slope line for our hillside performance standards. But basically, the residential estate lots, which is not open space, but those are a couple of state homes which may be proposed in certain estate areas adjacent to the open space. But generally, there's open space.
But in the specific plan, what can, it's, what can open space be used for?
It, open space could be used for parkland, natural areas, things of that nature. For, for zoning purposes, one house per 40 acres is one of our zoning standards. The Lost Canyon Specific Plan does have specific ideas for the open space currently.
Okay. All right.
Councilmember Lidster.
Thank you. A couple of questions, and maybe this is for the applicant. I understand that there is maybe two years remaining on the current entitlements. Is that accurate? What's our timeframe? I mean, if we grant this this evening and go forward, is it realistic that there's time to, to make the changes and go forward with this?
There are several ways to look at this. Look at this. They have entitlements for the actual housing units, which are the design. They're going through a time extension for that currently. We have the track map, which is approved in phases, and there was an inauguration of one of the phases, and there's several more years for the additional phases. This project, should it go through with a new application, it may require a new tentative track map, so time limits may start over for certain instances. There's a lot of moving parts for that, but yeah, modification, should they apply for it, would give them additional time, and the applicant could further explain that.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I understand that this, this basically eliminates the golf course that was at one, that was planned at one time, but yet, it's still, it's still, we still have, I guess it's called commercial, recreational, commercial use. Yeah, and I don't know if that's part of this development discussion, but if you don't put a golf course there any longer, what are other commercial recreation uses that could be utilized?
So that's, that's one thing that could be looked at with the potential general plan amendment. Currently, the specific plan envision recreational, commercial, as the golf course use, limited retail resort type situation with the golf course, but it is primarily golf course in this instance.
So it could be a putting green or some, okay. Fair, that's right. Fair enough. And once, and I appreciate that we go forward with this, the open space is still owned by the developers, of course. What is standard, they control usage, or how is, what is the standard or often happens with open space? Is it, does it remain as is? Is it?
Some of the open space is.
Is it conservancy? I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious, what is, what normally, what, or is it just lay fallow and beautiful forever?
Some of it's transferred to an open space authority. Some, it could be given to the Park District, it could be an HOA, it could be the conservancy, which handles the nature preserves required by the state, federal agencies.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the hearing for anyone in the City Council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, do you have speaker cards? The applicant is here. Rick Nelson?
Elizabeth, do you have that? Good evening, Mayor, and fellow council members. My name is Rick Nelson, and I'm with Newport Pacific Land Company. Thank you for the opportunity to explain our request for this general plan amendment application before you tonight, and some of the ideas that we have about the plan moving forward, and some of the benefits that we think the plan has. As staff has indicated, that... It's not working now. That way? I just wanted to provide a brief overview for the council and some of the history on the project. As staff mentioned, in 2013, the Lost Canyon's project was approved for 364. Can you hear me okay? Am I too far away from the mic? I'm sorry. These things are always a little shorter than... Oh, fancy. Never mind. I like this place. So anyhow, as I said, in 2013, the City Council approved the Lost Canyon's development for 364 single-family homes and multiple phases in conjunction with an 18-hole golf course and clubhouse that was in operation at that time. The development plan has resident development in four areas that was referred to as Dry Canyons, Tappo Canyon South, in addition to Tappo Canyon North, and around a portion of the golf course. The final map for the Phase One development, that's everything north of Lost Canyon's Drive, was approved in June of 2022 for 180 lots. And then the clubhouse and the golf course operations were terminated in 2016 due to lack of demand to support the operations. So Newport Land Company has been trying to market this project since 2020, and had some challenges as a result of that. First of all, the project lots are spread out in these three separate distinct planning areas, making the land plan very inefficient. Additionally, the backbone and grading infrastructure costs are exceeding the high due to the spread-out nature of the project, coupled with inefficient street layouts and non-single-loaded streets. And to renovate the golf course, we're estimating it would probably cost more than $40 million to renovate the golf course and the clubhouse, which, if nonexistent, economic viability, because there's not any developers that we're aware of that would want to come in and spend that kind of money, particularly with the history of the project. So as a result of that, we're making our quest tonight, and I just wanted to... Well, as was mentioned, there's this area called Dry Canyons. And actually, to answer one of your questions, Councilmember Rhodes, anything that you see is colored is owned by Newport Land Company. Anything else that's white here is owned by Hillwood Development Company. So what Newport Land Company controls is this area in yellow, which is Dry Canyon. This area here, and I'll call it a kind of a rose color, is Tappo Canyon South. When you get to north of Lost Canyon's Drive, which is this road here, this is the golf course that ceased operations over in this location and in this location here. And then there was 184 lots approved in this brown area that you see in here, and this purple area that you see here and here. So our conceptual land plan is what you see in this slide here. What we are proposing is that all of the residential development that was approved by the City Council previously be relocated from Dry Canyon, which, again, is this area down in here, and in Tappo Canyon South, and also this northeasternly area, which there were 32 lots, be put in these areas that you see are yellow, and it's taking up a portion of the former golf course. And I'll just mention to you, you'll see this light-colored area here in the white with lots designated in it. That's the prior final map that was approved by the council, I think back in 2013 or somewhere abouts. What we're showing here in yellow, or in this light yellow that you see here, are the lots that we're proposing would be relocated from Dry Canyon, Tappo Canyon. In addition to that, we're proposing a two-and-a-half-acre area here for a community recreational facility, and then also make the current lake out there more of a feature of the development. It would be a five-acre lake that would get overlooked from the community facility over the lake. And then some of our initial ideas about how we would use the rest of the development, I think Councilmember Lister to answer maybe some of your questions, is conceptually, what we're wanting to do is open up the other areas to the north for public trails, hiking trails, biking trails. And so what you see here are some of the ideas that we have to open this up to the public, up in these areas, up in here, up in here, located up in the northeast section of the area, and then some of the areas in the former golf course over here. So the new plan benefits that we see is, one, it's going to increase open space by nearly 300 acres by not doing any development down south of Lost Canyon's Drive. Both of those areas that are currently allowed for residential development would be zoned open space, or we're proposing would be open space, creating four-and-a-half miles of new public-accessible hiking and biking trails that I showed on the previous slide, eliminates all housing in environmentally sensitive Dry and Tappo Canyon areas, and I'll show you a slide here in a minute to elaborate on that. Includes a new community center with availability to the city and community events. And the reason that we thought this was important is that our understanding was, when the golf course was in operation, the clubhouse, the city hosted not just city events, but community events, and we would still like to make that available to the community too as part of this plan. Provides a more sustainable plan with more efficient use of public services, police, fire, water, and sewer, because it is aggregated in a more central area. And from at least our perspective, it creates an economically feasible plan that will provide needed housing in this area. And as I emphasize, it's already been approved by the City Council previously. And we're not proposing any more than 364 lots that were previously approved by the City Council at all. And just to refresh some of the audience and members of the public and the council, these are the housing designs, some of the housing designs that were approved by the council previously, and this is in the PD development. So these are the actual concepts or plans that are in the PD development. As you can see, here's a streetscape here, and it includes both two-story homes and one-story homes here that you see here, depending upon where the location is in both of these examples. But you can see the architecture, I think, is very nice architecture, articulated very well on the front and the backsides of the homes. And they're all single-family detached homes that are consistent with what I think you see predominantly here in Simi Valley. And these are some of the concepts that we have for the clubhouse. We've built these in other communities, and they're very nice facilities. They're probably anywhere from 8,000 to 10,000 square feet of both conditioned and unconditioned space. We try to create these things so that you can hold multiple events there at one time. If somebody's having a function, they can have it in one area but not occupy the entire clubhouse facility so nobody else can use it. Or you can open up if there's a bigger event there. But it would include swimming pools, these outdoor spaces, a lot of what we call indoor-outdoor spaces, where you can have a cupboard area where you can do cooking and barbecues and stuff, and it spills out to the open space areas that you can have your functions. As I mentioned, one of the benefits that we think this plan provides that we're proposing is that this exhibit here illustrates some of the biological impacts that the project has already gone through the approval process, by the way, with US Fish and Wildlife, California Department of Fish and Game, the whole gauntlet of all the resource agencies, Regional Water Quality Control Board. And we've got approvals to do this, but notwithstanding that, I think that not developing in Lost Canyons and Tappo Canyon has some additional merits. These dots that you see here, these red dots, and orange dots, and yellow dots, are what they call gnat catcher, nesting pairs, and they're protected species. And what you see here highlighted in these yellow checkered areas are their homing ranges. And as you can see, there's a significant amount of these areas down here, both in Dry Canyon and Tappo Canyon South, that have these gnat catchers. There are some up here in the north, but not nearly to the extent that you see down here in Lost Canyons and/or Tappo Canyon South. Additionally, this is a map showing the jurisdictional areas here for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And again, as you can see, there is a dry creek bed that mostly here, and then it gets watered during the winter. But right down the middle of this proposed development is this creek areas, which, in order to develop this, there's a lot of impacts and mitigations that have to be done, but that wouldn't be the case if the council would allow us to move forward with the general plan permit application. And similarly, here in Tappo Canyon South, this area in here is another creek that runs through there. Primarily, all of the creeks that are existing in the northern portion of the site aren't being impacted by the development at all, so another benefit that we see with our proposed plan. There's a little time lag here. Did I skip one? Okay. Getting too excited pushing this. So some of the other benefits that we see of the plan, there's no grading or disturbances in the undeveloped areas of Dry or Tappo Canyon South, decreased environmental impacts that I just mentioned, there's no change in the total unit count, we're sticking to the 364 that's previously approved, a decrease in traffic and water usage due to elimination of the golf course, and we're proposing to provide public access to hiking and biking trails. So as staff mentioned, our general plan amendment application request is that Lost Canyon's 364 lots to be allowed to be developed in Phase One of the project, which is everything north of Lost Canyon's Drive, on a portion of the former golf course, to change a portion of the former golf course from recreational-commercial to medium-density residential, and then to allow Dry and Tappo Canyons residential medium and residential low land use designations to be zoned open space in perpetuity. And the staff has shown, this is what the current general plan allows, and with the lots overlaying here. And one of the things that I did mention was the very inefficient street layout and the like, and you can see they have long stretches of roads with either no homes on it or a single loader, what we refer to as a single loader home. So it's a very inefficient land plan from a development standpoint, and similarly here in Tappo Canyon. And again, as I mentioned at the initial part of my presentation, what NPLC owns is the yellow areas you see here, the brown, the pink being the golf course, the yellow and the yellow down here. So all these areas in south of Lost Canyons, and here, and here, would be, we're proposing be zoned open space. And Hillwood owns these RE land use designations here in the open space here, similarly up in this area here. And the proposed plan, as you see here, no development south of Lost Canyon's Drive. It all is being located to the north side of Lost Canyon's Drive. And I forget which council member had asked the question, but a significant portion of this project is going to be covered by what was referred to as conservation easements. And it's primarily up in this area in here, is a large area up in here, and there's some smaller areas down in here, and those would still be covered by the conservation easements under our current Resource Agency permits. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at this slide right here, and I remember from seeing a presentation previously, there is, south of the Lost Canyon Boulevard, a one or two developed lots there. Can you tell me about those?
You're correct, Councilmember Rhodes. As part of the agreement that we had with Hillwood Development was to, once these lots were actually developed, they had the right to come in and purchase four lots from NPLC. And they were previously designated in this area in here. There was two lots in this area, one was in this location, one was here. And then additionally, there was two more lots up in this area in here. And as a result of moving the 32 lots that were here down in this location here, we needed to come up, from a contractual standpoint, to provide Hillwood two additional lots, and that's what you're referring to, Councilmember Rhodes, these two areas down in here, where we'd come off with a very small portion, create two additional lots there that they could purchase for them to maintain our contractual obligations with them.
Okay. And when the land below the road gets designated as open space, what's your vision for that land? What happens to it?
Well, I mean, I don't think NPLC has the strong desire to maintain, own the property. If there was an agency, as I think I heard staff mention, that would be wanting to acquire that, we would certainly be open to that. As I said, that we're designating this as an open space, so if that wasn't feasible, then we'd have to look at the HOA and do whatever minimal maintenance is required down there, but we're certainly open to, if there's another party that's interested in acquiring that property, or taking over the responsibilities for it, and if it was a public, a park or other kind of agency that would want to maintain that open space designation, we would certainly be open to that.
All right. Councilmember Litzter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question of understanding. The Phase One had the 180 lots originally...
I think it was 184 technically.
184 lots approved. And it's my understanding, then, that really that stays in place. You're simply surrounding, adding to that. So is that accurate?
That's correct. And maybe if I could briefly switch back to one of these slides, I think that shows it a little more clearly. And so what you're referring to, Councilmember Litzter, is all of these areas here that I briefly mentioned in my presentation, that is the current final map locations of these lots in here, along, and also in here and here. The one exception to your question is that the current 184-unit final map covers these 32 lots in here, so that would go away. But primarily, the existing lots under the current final map would stay in place.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your understanding. And that, just so I clarify, so you could actually go forward with that immediately, that phase? Well, we obviously have a pre-screening, but you have authorization to begin work immediately on that if this goes forward. Is that accurate?
Excuse me. Both from an entitlement perspective, i.e. the city council or the city's approval process, entitlements, yes, you're correct. And similarly, from a resource agency perspective, we have the approvals in place available to proceed, with the one minor exception, we've got to record a conservation easement, which we're very, very close to.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
I see no further questions. Oh. Councilmember Rhodes?
Yeah, so should you go ahead with this plan? I have a special request. I've lost a lot of balls up there in the sky, and I use a name when I golf. I put "titelist" on them. So if those could be returned to me, if you find them in the lake or in the bushes...
We'll do.
Yeah, same here, only I put "pro V." Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the first speaker is Ronald Camarata.
Okay, the first speaker is Ronald Camarata.
Members of the council, mayor, city attorney, and city manager, I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to address the needs of the El Rancho Simi Cemetery and address 5B of the agenda today. I have been a trustee for the cemetery for a few years now, and I'm excited to be a part of something that helps our community members during their saddest moment. Our cemetery provides a peaceful resting place for our departed loved ones at an affordable price without religious overture. Many of our military personnel are buried there as well. We even recently refurbished our veteran wall. Unfortunately, as I stand before you today, we are running out of cemetery plots quickly and need to find new land for expansion. The cemetery was established in 1890 as a private cemetery by Clementine Parentau and continued as a private cemetery until 1946, when the County of Ventura purchased the land and established a cemetery district with five appointed trustees to supervise the operation. Within the cemetery, there is a pioneer section, which contains the original burial plots of Simi residents, both colony and others, that settled in Simi between the 1870s and 1890s. The cemetery is the only non-denominational cemetery in the city, along with it being the most affordable for the community. Several years ago, in order to increase the number of plots available, one of the roads that leads across the cemetery was closed and converted into burial plots. This allowed the cemetery to offer more burial plots to the public. Unfortunately, we are close to being sold out on those plots and are considering doing the same with the last remaining road in order to give us time to plan for the future. Over a year ago, we established a committee to help locate additional land that could be part of the district. During the past year, we have searched high and low for resolution to our problem, but most solutions have been too costly for the cemetery, which would make it unaffordable to the community. While we believe we have enough plots to serve our community for the next five to seven years, we wanted to start planning now for the future. As you know, these things take time, and we don't want to be left empty-handed and without a plan. Today, I ask your support in allocating acreage to the El Rancho Simi Cemetery to be developed over time for use by our community. This land would still be considered open space and would be available as an asset to the district. This would solve the shortage of plots that are current, that we are currently faced with for at least the next 100 years, and allow our community an affordable alternative to the two other cemeteries located within our city. I believe an allocation of acreage would be a win for all. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Mayor, City Manager, and the City Attorney and Staff. Normally, I just say things. This is too important to me to do that. I wanted to read a statement. My name is Steve Frank. I'm a member of the Simi Valley, El Rancho Simi Valley Cemetery Board of Trustees, appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Before you tonight is the pre-screen application for the next chapter of the Lost Canyon conversion from golf course facilities to housing. A dramatic change in request in the current use of that location, an erosion of a community asset we have enjoyed for years. Tonight, I wish to suggest a way to offset this loss and allow the developer to be an intimate part of the community which they develop their extensive housing project. I'm here tonight representing the El Rancho Cemetery Board to appraise you of an opportunity to serve a long-term issue of our community. As you are aware, we have Assumptions Cemetery to serve the Catholic constituency, we have Mount Sinai Cemetery to serve the Jewish constituents, the Pioneer Cemetery is our only non-denominational cemetery created years ago when Simi Valley was less populated and it appeared to meet the community needs at that time. With the growth of our city and the fact that this Pioneer Cemetery is extremely near capacity, it now becomes a serious problem for citizens who may wish to reside afterlife in their hometown. With less than 1% of land currently available for development citywide, acquiring 100 to 150 acres for a cemetery is a daunting issue the cemetery board has had to deal with. With this project proposed to have 1,000-plus acres of open space, and with open space designation in our general plan permitting a cemetery, this may be the last opportunity for the city council to address this serious problem for our community. I respectfully request that the city council direct staff to engage in conversations with the developer, if approved tonight, to work with a committee of council members, members of our cemetery board, and staff to identify a location in the 1,000-plus proposed open space acres and identify approximately 150 acres for a community non-denominational cemetery. Rather than wait for final approval of this project and attempting to acquire the needed acreage in the newly designated open space, we respectfully suggest having negotiated and called out in the final development approval to avoid any conflicts with other agencies that may not have the same community agenda as both the council members and our cemetery board assume on behalf of our community. With 100 to 150 acres, it would allow the city to assist a Simi Valley authorized cemetery board, working with city staff and the city legal entities, to bring in a professional cemetery operator, much like the agreement with Waste Management and Spectrum, to serve the identified needs that are now paramount. We only recently knew of this development, or we would have approached the developer earlier in the process. Please let's not get lost in the details at this stage of the, of this suggestion, and allow our great staff and city legal team to do what they best wants, know that they can provide direction for you. We're hoping the developer will identify tonight their concurrence regarding this community need, and wish to be an integral part of our community in resolving the deficit we have for cemetery space. Thank you for your consideration tonight regarding, regarding this serious situation. Thank you.
Debbie Wall?
Oh, no, that's the wrong way. Hi, my name's Debbie Wall. I live on Anderson Drive. We are in an unincorporated area, so I'm sorry, I couldn't vote for anyone. And I do have a bucket of titelist balls that came from that golf course area. We, our concerns are, in 2003, as we saw in an earlier video that the hospital presented, the fire, the circle of fire, came up to the end of Anderson Drive, and we had a lot of lucky loose, such that our street was completely clogged with, with those people observing the fire. We were told to call the police. We did. The police said, "We're sorry, we are out of anyone to send you, so you're going to have to handle it yourself." So we did go out and ask people to leave, but they didn't want to. So our concern, I don't know how this new development will affect the emergency exit that Anderson Drive is supposed to be, but our concerns are that we were blocked in, and there's only approximately 20 homes in our area, but the addition of these other residences, businesses, and getting them out of there, there's really not a good solution. Someone at some point suggested paving over the wash area and making that into a street. I don't know if that's logistically possible or not, but I'd just like you to consider what happens in emergency situations. We've been talking about emergency preparedness. We just had our hurricake, and so, I didn't make that up, I heard that somewhere. But just, you know, we need to think ahead. People don't, don't really respect boundaries, and they don't respect other people's properties. So in an emergency situation, I would hate for someone to be injured due to poor planning and a really logistical escape route. As it is now, we have lots of motorcycles and electric bikes and that type thing, just kind of going through the fence. They cut the old barbed wires from where there were the cows and all that kind of stuff, and they just go in and do what they want. But not really concerned about them. So anyway, if you'll just consider the traffic problem in emergency situations, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker.
Okay, does staff decide to respond to any of the comments or issues raised?
No, I don't have any specific comments.
Sean, if you want, you want to address Anderson, how it, you'll have, the estate lots would only be, would be the only homes that would go out that way.
We don't have a development plan in place yet to determine what will be affected by these existing lots. That'll be part of the development review process.
Thank you. Councilmember Lister?
Thank you. So I just want to follow up with questions based on the remarks that we just heard. First of all, I guess I need to understand, let me, I'll work backwards. Anderson Drive, where physically is that located in?
It's at the southwest portion of the property where it, where it abuts the city.
Basically behind Simi Valley Hospital.
Got it, okay. Near where I used to live on Reservoir, or off, okay. I understand. Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be.
So it's, it's down there. So actually, this would be taking less residential.
Yes.
From what was initially planned. Okay, okay. Got it. I mean, it becomes open space. Okay, thank you. And then I wondered if, if staff could speak to the comments made by Mr. Frank and Ronald of the cemetery board. I understand that our general plan does allow for cemetery usage in open space. Is that accurate?
I don't have the general plan in front of me in regards to that specific matter. We do have a specific plan, which is a Lost Canyon specific plan, which specifically spells out open space uses within that specific plan area, including undisturbed natural areas, a number of other things. That does not mean a specific plan amendment would not, could not be provided to change that outlook, but currently, there is no provisions for a cemetery in the specific plan as it's written specifically.
But it may.
But amendments to this specific plan will be coming forward as part of the development application.
That, that's correct.
Will be coming forward at a later.
And so at that point, it could be.
It could be added.
Added or changed.
Yes.
Okay. And my question, maybe, maybe because my son did his Eagle project in Pioneer Cemetery, I feel a great affinity to that beautiful space, but I understand it, I know that it's random space. I guess my question is, would the, Mr. Nelson, would the applicant be amenable to having a conversation with, and this has nothing to do with approval tonight, but maybe have, amenable to having a conversation with our staff about that potential usage? Is that appropriate to ask or, or not at this time? It is.
It's down low again. I'll just bend over. You know, I would never say never. It's, you know, it's obviously a problematic, you know, use, particularly from a residential developments perspective, and, and I don't know specifically what's allowed in open space or not, but, you know, just quickly thinking about it, and this is just off the cuff, is that all of the Resource Agency permits that we have don't contemplate that. So there would have to be, I'm presuming, a whole new opening up of the Resource Agency permits to allow that use to happen, because 150 acres, as you can see, if it was in Lost Canyons or Tappo Canyons, is not consistent with the residential plan that was approved by these agencies. You know, additionally, it's very expensive to develop down in those areas because of getting infrastructure down, and roads and those sorts of things. But to answer your question, I would not, you know, I would not say no, but I think there are just some real practical things that would make it certainly a challenge.
Understood, understood. Okay. Thank you for addressing that.
No? Okay. Then this hearing is now closed. Any further comments or questions from city council members? Okay. If the city council has any further questions of staff or the applicant at this time, the public hearing may need to be reopened, and since I see none, I will now entertain a motion.
I move staff's recommendation.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar, and there is one resolution for your consideration this evening. Consent item seven, resolution number 2023-40, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley adopting certain amendments to the city's 457 deferred compensation plan.
Move consent unless somebody wants it pulled.
I would like to ask some questions on item three, if we could, please.
All right. And I'd like to move the rest of the consent calendar with the exception of item three.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Discussion on item three.
Thank you. Item three is basically approval of the draft fiscal consolidated annual performance and valuation report, the CAPR, for submission to, yes, Department of Housing and Urban Development. So my, my question is just actually, in the report itself, it talks about some of our actions. Specifically, in page 13 and 14, it talks about affordable, about affordable housing and housing renovation loans for low, middle-income residents. And I believe it says that the program is closed due to staffing shortages, turnover. My question is, is that program slated to be reopened? What is, what is the status of that?
Yes, it's, it's, we'll be reopening that, that program, the home rehab program, as well as opening up our home loan program as well, so.
And what's the timeframe of that, that you envision that? Do we, do we have the staff to do it now, I guess, is my question?
We're currently recruiting for a home rehabilitation coordinator, so we're recruiting for that position now, and we're getting all the documents in place for the loan program. So I, within the next several months, I would imagine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I just wanted to, so that, so the report then, and this is an annual report, is that correct?
It's an annual report that is as of June 30 of 23.
Sorry, what was the question?
The, this report runs through June 30 of 2023.
Correct.
Yes. So it looks prior fiscal year.
Got it, okay. And, and one final question. Page 13 speaks about, when you add them all together, nearly 12 million available in HOME funds. Do we, are, can you maybe speak to what the intention is with those funds in the future? Are they just specific to the different programs?
I'm not picking up the 12 million.
Well, it's a, it's a, I'm sorry, I added, let me get to page 13.
Oh, you're making me do math.
Well.
Yeah, so, yeah, so there is money in a local, our local housing fund, there is money in our.
Right, right.
All those are cumulative, they're cumulative funds, not one fund.
Right, exactly. And so they're all earmarked for different things, including what we just spoke about.
Some of the home funds are earmarked for, for particular things based upon the documents that we filed with the state. The local housing fund and the local successor agency fund monies are. The local housing fund and the local successor agency fund monies are successor agency monies still need to follow the rules from the former redevelopment law. Local housing fund money is our own money for our own use, and we can use them however we want for local housing.
Got it, okay, thank you.
We all have different rules.
That's what I that's what I assumed, and I just wondered if there was anything that we should be aware of or thinking about in those funds, that's all.
That's why we got them.
Thank you.
Julia does a great job.
Julia, just you just keep letting us know what we need to do. Okay, that was it, thank you, and I'm willing to certainly go forward.
So can I get a motion?
I will motion to approve item three, please.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, next on the agenda is item 9A, consideration of distribution of fiscal year 2122 budget surplus funds in accordance with the fund balance policy, and City Manager Gabler is presenting this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, this is our annual trip to the City Council with regard to distribution of budget surplus monies from prior fiscal years. At this this, Jen, item this evening is discussing a approximately $10 million budget surplus from fiscal year 2122. The money has been distributed, originally distributed through our, the 2324 budget process with the numbers indicated on page two. The money through the through the budget surplus policy is distributed 40% to the retirement investment fund, 40% to the infrastructure investment fund, and 20% to the contingency fund. Those numbers add up to $4,543,754 in both the retirement and infrastructure fund and the $2 million into the contingency fund, which the policy states cannot go over $2 million. We've made recommendations in the staff report for the full amount of the retirement investment fund to be used to to do an additional discretionary payment to pay down the city's CalPERS obligation. We've made a recommendation for the full amount of the infrastructure investment fund to go towards the city's streets and roads program, which will which will be added to the $2.5 million that the city council has already approved in the 2324 budget. That'll bring our investment of a little over $7 million to the to the streets and roads program for fiscal year 2324. And then looking at, under the contingency fund, looking at all the streets and roads investments that we're making into the community, one thing that was not included in the budget going forward for 2324 was to restripe a number of locations in the city, and so we're looking for $400,000 to be allocated to do some restriping of streets in the city that that are looking like they can need some help. That would result in a balance of the contingency fund of $1.6 million to be used at some later date if there is, should something come up. So that is staff's recommendation. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Happy to make a motion?
Please.
I move to approve the distribution of $9,469,508 from the fiscal year 2122 budget surplus as outlined in staff's report.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Can I just have to say, I'm glad that we're paying down some of our deferred compensation expenses that will have long-term implications. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, next on the agenda is item 10A, City Council member reports.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last meeting, I won't take all the time to talk about the council retreat, but I thought that it was an excellent opportunity for us to hear from the city and share some of our ideas moving forward, and I'll let other council members talk to that that event, but it was very useful, and and I could see doing even more of those to get more in touch with what's already happened and give us an opportunity to talk about things we would like to accomplish. Thursday, August 31st, I, with Councilwoman Lister, we did the Neighborhood Council interviews for Neighborhood Council Three and Four. Previously, on that day, I attended the golf tournament for the Police Foundation, and unfortunately had to leave only about 12 holes into it to make our our interview date, but given how those 12 holes went, interviews were better. On Thursday, September 7th, I attended the three meetings, the SCAG Committee on Community, Economic, and Human Development, it was a joint committee meeting, and then the General Council meeting. One of the outcomes of that meeting were suggestions being sent from SCAG to the state on RENA allocation improvements and how to improve that process for the next round. I thought the suggestions were sound, and and the growing frustration from all areas of government, all municipalities, on how that is taking place was very evident, and I I hope that they listen. Unfortunately, the body that could make the change is them, and they can choose to do whatever they want. On Friday, September 8th, oh, I'm sorry, also on that day, I attended the Clean Power Alliance meeting, and at that meeting, we approved four more acquisitions of energy. Simi Valley is one of now two municipalities that I am proud to say are doing the best financial decision with the Clean Power Alliance for our citizens, and the the opt-in level that we are at gives the best rate discount on energy to our citizens. With the acquisitions in energy that they're making, they may actually be able to, may at some point, drive down the the cost of electricity, and until that happens, at least our citizens are benefiting. Also, I'm proud to say that there's only two members of that board that I think have ever asked to go and see an unredacted version of the contracts that we're being asked to sign, and surprisingly, they're negotiating really good contracts. They are just, what we vote on is heavily redacted, and no one has bothered until now to to actually look at them. So I'm doing my best to represent the city and protect our interests in that way. On Friday, September 8th, I attended the ribbon cutting grand opening of Iron Chiropractic. I'm very happy to have another business relocate from the other side of the hill to our lovely valley, and that was a great event. And on Sunday, September 10th, I attended the Cops and Cruises Car Show, which I'm sure others are going to talk about. My favorite takeaway was being the first to throw balls to get Bill Klepper into the dunk tank. Unfortunately, I missed. And, Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Councilmember Litzler.
Thank you. Appreciate your efforts there. I'd actually like to go back. August 28th, of course, is when we we met for our last session, and and I think we all had the opportunity to visit with Newport Land Development, and appreciated that conversation that we could have with them, which was included, continued this evening. On August the 29th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Simi Valley Job Fair, and I see that we have representatives with here with us from that wonderful institution, and I and I thought it was very well done, and there were a lot of attendees, and I know that people benefited both from the employers that were looking for employees as well as job seekers. In fact, I went, yes, as a council member, but yes, I did have a son-in-law's resume in hand, and it was very interesting to go through and have that conversation with the employers and and see that there's a lot of good happening, so I appreciate that the chamber doing that for us. As Councilmember Rhodes suggested, on August 30th, our council retreat was very informative. Appreciate the reports that were prepared, and I wanted to again thank my fellow council members for being willing to look at a possibility of what we can do with our the area that had been designated for performing arts, and so I appreciate that we can at least look at that together, and so thank you for that time for having that discussion. And yes, on Thursday, August the 31st, it was delightful to visit with Councilmember Rhodes and interview many outstanding candidates. We were only half an hour behind most of the evening, too fun to speak with all these wonderful Simi Valley residents, so again, appreciate that opportunity. Friday morning, September the 1st, I did attend the Simi Valley Education Foundation Presentation of Teacher of the Month, and I'd like to commend Emily Dopking of Simi Valley High School, who was the honoree this this month of September, and it was lovely to learn more about her and her commitment to special education in our community, and she particularly has worked hard in her programming for athletics for the special education population and 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 working together with the general population to have experiences together, and kind of a pioneer in that field at that high school, and so congratulations again to Ms. Dopking. And speaking of Simi Valley High School, that evening, I did attend the Simi Valley Royal High School. Don't pluck your ears, Councilmember Kavanaugh. Royal represented well, it's just that Simi represented better, but it was, it was actually, I wanted to thank, it was, I did want to thank Adventist Health, who actually put on a lovely meal for for some of the people associated, some of the educators and attend, it was lovely to be there with my family there at the end zone, I felt it just was a grand experience, and it was a very fun football game, and and I saw, I appreciated Chief Shorts and all of the coverage that was there to make sure it was a very safe and fun experience for everyone, and so it was actually a very, very fun evening, so thank you for that opportunity. The next week, I did hop in a car on Labor Day and drove with my son up to Idaho to return to college and get him checked in, but it's it's fun that you can even do work long distance, and so I did also, as Councilmember Rhodes mentioned, I did also was able to attend the Regional Council Policy Committee joint meetings where we where they were basically speaking about the Connect SoCal five-year plan and and what is being planned, and so that was interesting to to listen to the draft report. And I wanted to thank the opportunity to have phone conversations with with council, with our our C manager, Brian Gabler, and and C attorney, David Cass Harris. Thank you for taking my calls and being able to resolve some of the issues I had, so it is much appreciated. And today, September 11, did have the experience of attending Council on Aging with Councilmember, with Mayor Protem Mike Judge, and appreciate all the efforts that are there doing for our senior population, and glad that they're back in session from a brief hiatus. I did want to conclude actually with a commemoration. Tomorrow, September the 12th, is the 15-year anniversary of the MetroLink Chatsworth horrific incident where we lost, where there were 25 people that were killed, including many wonderful members of our community, and there were 135 that were injured in that horrible, horrible crash. From that, it was, it's interesting, the MetroLink implemented PTC, Positive Train Control, basically, it was, it's, it was, it was an effort so that this would never ever happen again, that basically, they now have automatic switches when there's a red light that they're supposed to stop that will help actually correct for engineer error or whatever, and actually stop trains and make sure it is safer for travel. So I just, my heart goes out to those who I know who still grieve, loved ones, 15 years later, that never goes away, but I, that was a very dark time for our community, and I just wanted to say I appreciated all our first responders who were there, the those in the hospital, you know, did all they could to save lives, and it just, I know it was a very dark time in our community, but thank you to all who were there to to serve and help, and our hearts go out to those who still grieve. And so that concludes my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along with the rest of the council, on August 30th, I attended the council retreat. That was very informative, it was very nice, and I do want to thank Councilmember Litzler for bringing forward to us what the original plans were for the Civic Center. It was very interesting, and I think we'll have some some nice discussions on that in the future. On August 31st, I volunteered at the Simi Valley Police Foundation's golf tournament. We had a sellout crowd. Unlike Councilmember Rhodes, who, you know, loses those his balls, I just decided to not play. I just volunteer. I'm smarter that way. So but we had a great turnout. Ventura County Sheriff's did a flyover, so I'm sure there were people wondering, why is there a helicopter flying over our area? But it was a great turnout. The Canines did a demonstration, as always, the chief was there, along with a lot of officers were, who were off duty, were playing, but it was, it was a great turnout and a great event. The Police Foundation does a wonderful job on supporting our police department. On September 1st, I actually went out of town for a vacation, and that was also the Simi Royal game. So I was enjoying myself until Council Mayor Protem Judge sent me a text with the score for the football game, so, because I went to Royal and he went to Simi, and I just, I was crying afterwards, so, so, so thank you, Councilmember Mayor Protem. We had to keep up the camaraderie there, you know, keep up the competition between the two. So no, it was, it was fun. On September 5th, I actually, it was, I had the opportunity to have one of our building inspectors, home inspectors, come to my house to do an inspection on my new HVAC system. He had no idea who I was, so it was kind of nice to see how professional our our city, our inspectors are, and they show up on time, and they do a great job. So so it was very, very, very nice. Name was David, so nice gentleman. And on September 6th, I had our EDC, Economic Development Collaborative Executive Board meeting. What's kind of interesting is we were doing a lot of approvals for our CEO to sign contracts, getting a lot of money for the EDC, and the money is where we usually are just monitoring it and or being the turnaround person for it, but one of the big things that we're looking at this year is childcare issues and childcare training, and due to the, when the COVID started, we had so many childcare places, especially home base, and now we have a lot less than that, so there's, there's pretty much a struggle for home-based childcare in the county. So that's one of the areas that we're going to be focusing on is training, licensing, and help, and even lending for people that want to either stay in the childcare business, improve their facilities, or to start in it. So as, as working parents, that's something that can be very, very important to them, and to make it affordable. Not all parents, not all families can afford some of the private schools, so it's, I was really happy to hear that, and that's something that both the state and the county are watching. I had the pleasure, the chief sent me a video, a text of your video for the layover where you did an interview, chief. That was great. I really enjoyed watching that, learning a little bit more about you. I did find out you went to North Hollywood High School. My dad was a police officer there from 70 to 95, so I'm sure you got in trouble somewhere. I'm going to have to see if I can find something on him. He, he used to work all the football games at at North Hollywood High School, so, but I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. And I don't know if we're going to be closing in honor of anybody tonight, but I also wanted to make sure that I put out my condolences to the family of Pat Montoya. Pat was a year behind me in high school, and he just has done so much good for our community with the Not One More Program, so our hearts and thoughts and prayers are out for him and his family, so thank you.
Mayor Protem Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not too much. Did help the golf tournament on, I was happy to go on the council retreat, hear all the reports from the city and stuff, that was great. Thursday, August 34th, I did help at the Simi Valley Police Foundation Golf Tournament, like sold-out crowd, great turnout, everybody had a great time. A little warm, but it was nice. Can't help but talk about the blowout at the Simi Royal Game. Go Pioneers. Let's see here. SCAG, I have attended the EAC meeting on Wednesday night with SCAG. Not too much came out of it, pushing forward a program that should help streamline cities' permitting processes when it comes to laying down developments with their utilities. That project should be coming forward soon. The the Connect SoCal project will be a. be coming forward soon. The, the Connect SoCal project will be out and be able for public comment and reading in November, so that's a good thing, too. It's moving things forward. Thursday, September 7th, I attended the joint, the joint committee meeting for SCAG and the regional council. And that's been talked about enough, so the stuff is moving forward. Not, I don't think that RENA stuff's going to go anywhere, but it was a great effort. Friday, September 8th, I attended the VCTC meeting in Camarillo. Nothing new came out of that. I made sure all the council members got the Caltrans updates, nothing, nothing groundbreaking going on with Caltrans in our city right now. They are going to supposedly start cleaning up the on and off ramps soon. Yeah, I know. It's tough, but they are going to do it. It takes a while. And on Sunday, September 10th, I couldn't make the Blue Mass. I'm thankful, though, that St. Rosa Lumen did put one on. I was helping and volunteering at the Cops for Cruisers Car Show here at our city hall, which was attended by over 160 cars. Great event. Hope it raised a lot of money for the explorers. And as my report, I have been getting some, some talk from citizens in town about certain things they, they'd like to see the council trying to implement. I'm not too sure I'm on board with those the same way they are. One of them was asking the city council to pass an ordinance for, to make businesses in our city, especially retail establishments, to accept cash. Well, my point has always been, you know, everybody that knows me on this dais says, I'm the kind of guy that doesn't like to force those kind of things on businesses or homeowners. If a business doesn't want to accept cash, that's the business's prerogative. So there's other ways, if you don't use credit to get that done, you can always buy the cards at the mall or something like that, the stores, and use those as credit cards. There's all kinds of ways you can get around if you don't use credit cards. But for people that want to have their businesses not accept cash, you know, there's some really good reasons not to take cash. And some of them are, some of them are safety, some of them are, let's just say it, people can't count money anymore. So, yeah, there's a lot of reasons businesses don't take cash. And that's not something I think our council should be forcing people to do. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. So I've had such a busy two weeks that I can't believe how light my city calendar is. But August 30th, the council retreat, I just wanted to thank staff again for all the work they did in preparing for that meeting and the presentations they made. And I thought it was a real successful meeting, and I'm looking forward to a future one. September 8th, the Police Foundation Golf Tournament was a huge success. And, and what's exciting to me is that we've actually had two successful years in a row at our own golf course here in Simi Hills. We, there was a strong debate about whether or not it would be successful, because it wasn't a fancy club. And we actually were completely sold out this time. It was a fantastic event. And it's, you know, great for an organization that is so supportive of our police department.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could add on to your comment about the golf tournament, because it dovetails into something our community also needs to know. One of the reasons that the successful golf tournament is the food is outstanding. And one of the reasons the food is outstanding there is that Evelyn and Tony of the Junkyard took over that space. I think it's a community service announcement to let you know that the Junkyard, after three months of being closed, is open now. Now.
Yeah. And, and you know what? On that, on that note, their food service was one of the reasons that made having the tournament there feasible. So, yeah, absolutely. And then Sunday, Cops and Cruisers Car Show, I could not believe how packed the parking lot was. And it was a nonstop flow of people coming in and out. It was a fantastic family event. There was lots of things to do. And a great way of supporting our police explorer program. Chief, we need to have a conversation about North Hollywood High. I played football against them quite a few times, and I have some pretty raw stories to tell you. But with that, I'm going to ask if there are any agenda items, future agenda items.
Yes.
Actually, I appreciate Mr. Edgar Garibay, who is still here. I really am concerned about Royal Avenue. And, and I would like a request that we examine it, not just about speed limits on that road, whether it's flashing lights, whether, to be very honest, what concerns me the most is how narrow the sidewalk is and how close it is immediately to the road. And, and I would actually, for a section of it, like to see maybe even some fencing that protects our, you know, along the sidewalk. I don't know. Anyway, I guess I just throw some thoughts out there right now. But wondered if maybe we could take a serious look at that or agenda it in the future.
Let us, let us put something together for the council. We can send it to you on what we can and can't do. There are, I, there are limitations based upon engineering studies of what we can and can't do on the street. And so let us take a look at those, and also some suggestions on what we can do to address speeding as well as safety. And then we'll start, at least start there.
Okay. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
So then, with that, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Pat Montoya, really caring, wonderful member of our community, a driving force behind the Not One More organization, and a personal friend. And he will be dearly missed. And I also want to adjourn in memory of all those who lost their lives in the attack on September 11th. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.